So I don't think I've been here before, so maybe you can just introduce myself quick. I don't know how much time you have to be down for, and try to give me the welcome.
One song in that.
Okay. Well, the dance song will come at the end, most certainly. So right off, I have been at Centric now for maybe eleven months, almost, it'll be almost a year coming up. I've worked for Centric my whole career, all ten or eleven years at this point. In a variety of different roles, St. Cloud for about six years, I was in the same role that I had at Centric myself. Two and a half, and now came here to work with us, to play that number, like, give or take, if you want. Outside of working out about eleven wives, I have three daughters, seven, five, and two, so family's big, very, very important to me. And I'm also very passionate about the work, you know, between, obviously, work for opening my life. Just a little bit, a little bit of elevator speaking, I don't know me. I am, I am here to talk about COVID, and we did kind of a COVID-19 update, both locally and then from a system perspective as well. When we think about how Centric is addressing the current situation. I think if I was to maybe put a little context around this, I think I'm also trying to present the gravity of the situation that we are currently experiencing, again, in the health system and at the state and ultimately in this country. I'm part of a group that meets on Friday mornings with Meline and some business leaders. And I was sharing some of this information last Friday, and she had asked for me to come and share some of that information with you. So that is my intent. I'll rattle off, give you some statistics, and then some of the things we're trying to do to address the situation that we are in. And then would love for some dialogue about what your thoughts, perspectives, opinions, insights would make to continue to help us. That's something we'd really appreciate. Okay. The number that we have, and we are not the only one for that, both at the St. Cloud level and at the local level. So our hospital in Melrose today is full. It's not full of COVID, but it is full, and part of that is COVID-19. So we are very, very busy, hopefully. And St. Cloud continues to be extraordinary, but we're extraordinary enough. Our positivity rate, so what that means is of the number of tests, the percentage of positive that they're getting. So commonly misunderstood, this has nothing to do with the number of tests we're doing. It's the actual ratio of positive tests compared to coming tests we were. The number is about 22%, to give some perspective as to where we were and where we come, where we are now. During the first serves back in March, April, May, we were about 5%. So now it's going to be about 22% this season, it's going to increase in just a really, really large amount of time on a daily basis. Thirty percent of the hospital patients in St. Cloud are COVID. So we are not specifically seeing COVID-19, but 30% of the patient population in St. Cloud dedicated to one disease here. That's something that I haven't seen in the eleven years that I've been in healthcare, and with people that have been longer than I am too. And so 30% up against the hospital that's right now is in a 90 to 95% of fold on a daily basis. I just started to think about conspiracy of staff and of potentially stuff. So, I mean, we'll walk through some of those things, how we're addressing, depending on the level. And then, of course, there's a significant increase on the number of people that are sick, working within healthcare. I think the number that Centric shared this morning is about 30 people a day. Centric are going out on quarantine, and that is not solely specific to being sick themselves. Maybe they have sick kids, and we're going through this learning, or maybe they have a family, maybe they send you, but they have this quarter or something. So just what I wanted to say was that we are having a ton of staff hours, and that is thousands of significant personnel. So what this graph would show is, it just depicts, so, you know, I'll throw this out there too. You know, it took about 29 weeks for a state in Minnesota to get to 100,000 cases of COVID-19. It took six weeks to get to 200,000 cases of COVID-19, and it's going to take three weeks, in about two days, for us to get to 300,000 cases of COVID-19. So I'm throwing a lot of stats and a lot of numbers at all of you to try to present the case that this is, this is the real thing. This is, this is really happening in our communities. This is not a metro problem, this is not an urban problem. This is a Minnesota, greater Minnesota, central Minnesota problem that we are happy to experience ourselves. And I say that, and all of you might look at me and say, well, of course it don't feel right, that makes total sense to us. The anecdotal piece to, to pair or marry to the quantifiable data I just shared is the amount of people that come into the clinic every day and say, well, this isn't a real thing. This is just another cold, this is, this is just the flu. And what I'm trying to say to all of you as community leaders is this is not a cold, this is not the flu, and this could be anywhere real. So that's a kind of the picture I'm trying to paint. The graph that you see in front of you on the left is kind of the early spring number of daily new cases. So that was the spike that we saw there in April and May, and we saw some of that in St. Cloud. Not really so much actually here in Melrose, outside of maybe the whole large corporations. On the right is our current situation on the far right of that graph, as far as dealing with cases. Green and circles here are dealing with cases. So this will be thought that there in April and May, a problem in May. And now on the far right, relative to what May looked like, is overaction. On the right, we have the situation on the far right of that graph, as far as dealing with cases. Green and circles here are dealing with cases. So this will be thought that there in April and May, a problem in May. So I want to share a little bit of the far right. Now, we do, which you may have already heard of, with certain changes, on the right, now, far right, that's not going to be COVID-19. Far right, that's the fact that we're not handling COVID-19 cases that are raised, that we are offering COVID-19 cases. So you may have seen locally, we are developing a regional plan with SOX Center in Long Prairie and Melrose. SOX Center will become a COVID-19 hospital, where they will see COVID-19 only. Melrose and Long Prairie will absorb the non-COVID-acupuncture patients. It's difficult, we would see 10, 12 months ago before this happened. Melrose will absorb the eccentrical services from SOX Center. So the SOX Center docs will still deliver their duties, but they will be doing so in Melrose. And then those surgeries that were previously taking place in SOX Center will now be taking place in Melrose and Long Prairie. We are doing this in response to the numbers that I've shared, and to, to really do a couple things. Number one, because many of our local COVID-19 patients local, we can't. Because this isn't just like, oh, you know, we'll send you to St. Cloud. It might be, we'll, we'll send you to the NIC, because that's supposed to be where we can find the cost to. So we really want to do all of it, and to keep our local COVID patients local. And we want to do, and to help decompress St. Cloud for all the reasons that you said. Are there patients that we've seen in our facility that are seeking to stay some more in tertiary centers in St. Cloud? And how we work together in classes. So what are some of the main drivers of that? This, some might say, well, you know, how can we have a word about that? The decision was made on Tuesday, and we are going to be ready for our SOX board. That's kind of the new world of healthcare, that's making us happy and important. And I, I think, you know, what I feel really, really comfortable, we are really dope. You know, we have wonderful people working in St. Cloud, and St. Cloud, and Long Prairie. And it is absolutely phenomenal, giving us kind of a place to work. St. Cloud thinks of the same things, certainly expanding, invent capacity. We've already exceeded our capacity, their capacity twice. So, you know, that threshold, we need to do more, we have threshold, we need to do more. And we have certainly done, done a lot of these things. Placing itself, you know, people. St. Cloud thinks of the same things. Certainly expanding, invent capacity, you know, we've already exceeded our inventory, inventory twice. So we've got threshold, all the jobs, for lack of a better term, but now put the scrubs back on, and we can be a part of this. We have people that are working in long-term care that haven't worked in long-term care. That is not to say they don't know what they're doing, they know exactly what they're doing. It's just not a paranormal site of service. So people are stepping up all over the place, and I love, in this plan for SOX Center, to be our hub in the region, will create capacity, will create resource allocation efficiency for everybody, and it's going to help us, to help our patients. So I think we're really excited around work, because this is an exciting time, and we are pleased to be part of the community, right through. So lastly, I'll end with this slide, but I want to, one other piece that I think is important here. I serve the impotable, so, you know, someone among my leadership colleagues said, good leaders lead with trust, lead with compassion, lead with stability, and lead with hope. I am no, I have no question, I'm hopeful about this. I'm hopeful for a couple of years, for some of my lives in the fair. I'm hopeful because of the mission, and I'm hopeful because we, we faced adversity before we got into it. And I don't even know we dramatized the situation, but I'm just trying to hammer home the point, this is a real deal. I'm hopeful because of the team that we have. At times, it feels like we are really in the pain, and we're faring it, but I really like the people that are able to. And I really, really thank people in town, and, you know, people. And I trust that we're doing everything we can to really do. So, of course, we're doing, we're doing more and more treatments. We have different treatments than we had back in the spring. They are not entirely effective, but they are better than what we have. And then we all patients, we all weigh the vaccine in twenty months, maybe, before it goes out, say. And that is, you know, a month, three, four, five, six months. So in, in closing, and please, let's have some dialogue about this. The one thing I would ask is, is I've been suggesting to stakeholders throughout the week that we are better together. Centric here, or the healthcare world, cannot bear the brunt of this on our backs. Wear your mask, social distance, wash your hands, limit your gatherings. You know, the community is in this with us, we cannot stop this without the help of all of the community. Here in Melrose, in central Minnesota, and beyond. So just asking for your participation, and ask the white shadow, do you work through, how are we going to handle this? This is, this is very, very real, as far as capacity issues. So, that's what I had. Sorry, we do a little bit, it wasn't intended, but I just wanted to make sure I got the right tone. So I'll answer any questions, or have some good ideas.
Okay. Well, one question that, that I personally have is, are you guys going to be able to utilize the old hospital bedrooms? Since we have twenty back, or twenty-two back there. Are you guys going to be able to utilize a lot of that, plus the move part? Or, or is there going to be issues with licensing, or license, you know, or the staff? I mean, would you be able to maximize the use of the complete complex down?
Yeah, so I think in the spring, we focused a lot on space and stuff. Do we have enough stuff? If you ask, well, do we have enough space? The answer is yes, we have enough staff, we have enough space. We hold the hospital, could be part of the plan. But I think what is public with service and all has been staff. And we don't have enough people, we'll pull them another forty minutes ago. And that would be not, Melrose doesn't have enough people. Centric here doesn't have enough people, then I cannot find travelers there, so it's a very bad situation.
Are there any changes to, to new services, whether it's staffing, or however you find them, there's an individual or maybe two that's getting married and are not patients. Those folks getting corrected for their replacement, if needed, possibly be there?
Yep, so our emergency department, those staff move back and forth into those certain capacities when necessary. And, you know, for the longer, for the longer time, there's a warranty on, for certain utilization. It's been on our pay.
We're still going to have to build a wall, so you crash on the interstate and the whole.
Yeah.
Right operations, oh yeah.
I didn't answer the first question, yes. I should say, the move cap is, you know, all the E orgs, they say, if you can field an emergency situation, go with the local E. Go here, close to some of this department, you know how to do that. And then that team will work to say, oh, this is a COVID-19 patient, so we will send you to SOX Center, or you are not, and you can deal with it. I think it's even a bigger point to make that for SOX Center individuals, because there's, there's a likely reverberation of, well, I'm not going anywhere near the hospital, just pour it in. It's wanting to say, the hospital says, you're in this department, so there is reserving our resources to that as well.
The only thing that I guess I, I just hope to implore to Centricare and will is do everything you can to protect our vulnerable, also nursing home, our assisted living. When you look at, you're talking about stakeholders, and there's a lot of the stakeholders of the past, and all of them. And then the nursing home, some of the greatest generation, you know, World War II vets, you know, pretty invested. We really want them taking care of them. We really love those people, and I don't want to see them all pass away.
Yeah, and I think, let me, if I may, and I don't get, this is maybe where you can do a lot of your, your glory, okay? If I may, you know, we have experienced that in our nursing home area for this year. So very clearly aware of COVID-19, and that's going back to a long history in that facility. And appreciate the pain and the full, the whole opportunity that we're experiencing. So. Facility, I'm not suggesting, because you're not suggesting that. Maybe I can help, like, well, tell you that some of your employees are safe, therefore, in the COVID event, you're on the COVID line.
Well, we do appreciate you being here, and you're always welcome to come back if there's anything you want to say. It's in December, January, February. We just want to make sure everybody is as educated as possible, because we are Facebook Live, and we run TV. Please, if you, if you come back, or let me know if you can come back, whatever.
My pleasure to be here. Thank you for giving me the chance, and just myself, and you, and Melrose. If I could ever be of any assistance, or service, or, you know, that'd be personal or from a clinical perspective, please give me a call, give me a text, give me a note, there's too many ways that you will need. Do whatever you have to do, and I'd be just for my pleasure.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
Name one general, find court leave.
Okay, good evening, mayor. So we have the third report for the third quarter of 2020, September. Our general fund revenue right now is at sixty-eight percent of the budget, and this is at sixty-nine percent. You know, a large portion of our revenue comes from both local government aid and credit access, which is due twice a year. So a goal to those of this time, we review half of those to half payment, the other half will be made in December. Building Department was running a little low for the first three quarters of the year at sixty-four percent. One item that seems to be over budget in all of our budget interest payments. That was, that is what we have originally anticipated. We'll have some various courses or administrative services that will come in at the end of the year, as well as approximately twenty-three thousand from the coming four, two payments. We have the third quarter building press briefing that we can in October. So we have a revenue report of the eighty-five percent of those that we drafted, that we expect to have the flexibility total. We have a fire contract statement that's made in December in a variant of a trend, where we still see some of our support in that. Fourth, the NADA funds, that funded at forty percent of revenue and twenty-six percent for interest. As transforming that we have with the general fund is that you're bent, and otherwise you're going to not get many expenses. Our AP was kind of tied into, there's a question, the budget is at eighty-one percent. For September, they have been a large number of calls, that helps you know that that's given greatly as a lot of the money. So at the end of the year, I suspect that that will be a lot higher. And the some of those will also be higher as well, related to vehicle costs and personal costs. One item that also requires very crazy to budget is the ambulance department, they received about a million clients that were turning through Medicare that was given out through all ambulance departments, or something to do with that. The district said the ambulance department needs to be general company, because that may be your end. But there was something, something that was higher than anticipated, because of the building maintenance. And also gone through, that's fifty percent of the older accounts that we had right off. Fire Department, the revenue is at ninety-eight percent. Was it a little odd typically, because most of the revenue come by year-end from the comp ship? However, there were a lot of donations that people received. And now the term was extended, which is due next summer, so significantly higher. The department receives a lot of donations, and then dues to certain hospital companies. Other costs, and then running time in the fire department, since the maintenance, and we have some sensitive fees on the care that we're given. The legal expenses will also go a little bit higher, and that would need to go right, because people try to make the money. Our special revenue fund includes evidence, some of the loan funds, and the senior activities that are trying to build like over. Those accounts do not have a lot of activity this year, and mostly that the NADA fund, you're right, reporting a lot of the activity. But that would cover quite a few, that's it. Capital private funds, because there's more activities third quarter, and we know it was project, and it's only seventy percent. And while we're completing a store, we're exactly in a first step, and we're just looking at that. The district department also purchased a lot of truck that was going to be the third, and a lot of truck. By our best service fund, it completed most of the activities, you know, it's not a one, one part of the recovery tax that we want to receive, but all that sort of thing is happening. So overall, things moving and the right direction for the body are a little lower than we can expect, and activity volume and others have had high. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Bessie. Chief Mouse? Are you available?
Yes, here, member of the council. For our October 2020, the traffic area, we had twenty-nine citations issued for seventy-seven regular mornings, or, excuse me, verbal warnings, and fourteen regular warnings. For 2020, we had three hundred thirty-eight calls requests for service, and 2019 was three thirteen. We ended 2020 in ICR at thirty-two fifty-three for October, and last was thirty-six sixty-seven. So we did have some increases for the month, but overall for the year, we're still down. Thirty-eight agency assists called, that's up about eight or ten from our normal average. An area I'd like to highlight is winter parking. We do have seasonal parking in downtown, that's all been posted for the overnight, so the plows cleared the streets out. We've been putting some verbal warnings down on all those vehicles, and people have catched on that pretty quick. Another area is also twenty-four hour parking. We generally are a little more lax on that during summer months, but when winter comes around, we need people to move their vehicles every twenty-four hours, or more often in a snowfall. But the street crew can come in, clean up around anything that did get plowed around as much for safety reasons as anything. What's that, heart attack races down, or whatever, the heart, the spot races down, it's very dangerous to the rest of the community. So we're asking for everybody's help on that. I think that's pretty much it. Let's ask slightly questions.
Oh, we're good, thank you, Greg. Scott, Scott Demick, the city attorney?
Not, not much to report, I just to follow up on last month's meeting. We asked you to issue an order to abate a nuisance, and Chief Mouse reported back to me that that, that has been taken care of. So other than the Rose Park of matters, all of the, our items we brought for the council have been addressed.
Are there any questions?
All right, thank you, Scott, appreciate it. Uh, can you name the Melonhundt Director Report?
Um, we really, uh, are wrapping up projects for the end of the year for the building department, um, it's been, we've seen a, a, a decrease pretty significantly in that area, so next month, we'll have a year-end review, so you can see where we ended up as far as our projects go. On the planning side, the planning commission did meet last month and they talked about housing, as we talked about, as Mada's talked about, um, it's a very high priority item for the planning commission, and they actually identified areas in the community where they feel we could, uh, change the land use somewhat to accommodate housing better, and so that's something that, um, we're taking a look at right now. So, housing is a huge priority for all, all of our, um, various groups, and planning certainly discussed it. Uh, the Care Act funds were wrapped up, um, I believe that we reported last month that we were able to give three hundred, uh, perhaps three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for our local business community and twenty-three businesses. Obviously, uh, one of the things we're going to be talking about later on on the agenda is kind of this next round of, um, causes to the economy and what impact that may have, so I think that if there is an opportunity for us to take advantage and more funding at the state level, then that's something we certainly should take a look at, so that's all I have as far as that goes, I will begin to, uh, the other stuff. Heard you're all about being a brother to the community. Well, I should let you guys know, um, they said her family are doing very, very well, picked up a little boy named Alexander, so, and he was, uh, he was seven columns from out there, but he's been doing really well, super healthy.
Do you, um, City Engineer Report, Mr. Mike?
Hi, good evening, members of the council, uh, just to bring you up to speed on some of the old projects, the County Road sixty-five project, uh, the contractor did, did dig up that, uh, uh, pine sag and found out that it was under the county road, so we'll have to be talking to, uh, Sturz County and Dressing Dance, uh, next spring. Uh, the Fifth Street project, uh, it's pretty much on hold, uh, we'll be looking at bunches items in the spring twenty-twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-one, and making any corrections, uh, that are necessary. Uh, from my perspective, the K T South, uh, site improvements are complete, I don't know if there's any complaints, uh, the city staff that I need to follow up on, uh, but I think they're sitting in pretty good shape. Uh, pavement management, uh, we had completed the pavement courses on the Hill Crest of River Heights Drive project, uh, we didn't find anything unusual. Uh, we'll be bringing a cost proposal to the council, uh, at the next meeting to complete the, uh, final design for that project, uh. We're progressing on the Fifth Avenue, uh, plumbing issues, we've got some of the, uh, initial work done and we'll be sending a survey crew out to pick up, uh, some of the casting elevations and the elevations on the dish, uh, solidly craft drive. Uh, the Mount Rose, uh, Road Dam Bridge project, uh, we're evaluating options to address the site distance, uh, as you're looking north from First Street. Uh, previously, we had a, a, a technical plant area there that pulled the railing back away, uh, from the roadway so you could see the north a little bit. We're looking at some alternatives that might be, uh, a lower cost, uh, to the city, and we'll be bringing those forward. Uh, Carol Osberger, structural engineer, did do a dam inspection on, uh, the end of October, I think he'll be, uh, finalizing that report and submitting it to the city soon. Uh, we have A E D lined up to do, uh, some additional, uh, mooring to the river, uh, uh, at the end of November here. Uh, we're progressing on the modeling with the D N R and the Corps of Engineers, there's some issues to work out with the change in channel length, uh, due to the relocation. And, uh, the gray plan, uh, for the area between the dam and bridge has been, uh, pretty much completed, so, uh, we are making some progress on that. So, that's all I've got, uh, unless you have any questions?
Thank you, Mike, have a good night.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have, uh, things further on the agenda, so I just heard you have.
Since we have it, can you just maybe touch on how, how the parade will be?
Oh, yes, I can, certainly. Um, I was going to cover that kind of under the, where it comes up, but I came to it now, so, um, every year, we have a holiday of the parade, but in light of obviously what, uh, Brian was talking about, and in light of everything that is going on, um, there were significant changes that happened to that parade, um, to that event, I should say, originally, they were planning many, many, um, events outside, that has scaled back to essentially being a drive-through event. So, there still is a parade, that's the good news, but it's a drive-through. So, what we're encouraging people to do is not congregate, because that would be something that would be, um, not recommended per the executive order that the governor has put in place, and we are saying, similar to, if you guys are around when either, when the seniors, if you were here when the seniors did a drive-through at the end of the year, it's that type of thing, so there's going to be clothes and we're just going to drive through different parts of town so that we cover the majority of the community, um, and then people, you know, we're going to go by the nursing home, that type of thing, so that people can just stay in their driveways, or they can stay in their vehicles when they're able to see the parade. We also are going to be doing the fireworks, because fireworks, you can see from, you know, anywhere enough, so those are the two events. The other thing that we really want to emphasize is, please, the retail businesses, um, are open. As part of the governor's executive order, those are not being closed. So, it's very, very important that it be ten, please shop local, I think some of them are doing different specials, that type of thing. So, I really encourage people to, between now and Christmas, um, shop local as much as possible. When I talk about, uh, the COVID nineteen, I want to get a little bit further into how we're going to do it with this community, but that was happening from a holiday apple perspective, you know, again, it's, um, the committee is doing a great job of kind of visiting and figuring out how to make this work. So, that's the plan as well. Oh, and you know what, they also are still having a live activity scene, again, that is a drive-through, so that is something that's taking place in the parking lot at the school, and people can essentially drive through.
All right. All right, we are on to action, I have a, uh, resolution number twenty-twenty dash fifty-nine, resolution supporting a application for Minnesota Public Facilities Authority to react.
So, we were appropriated three point five million dollars from the Melrose, uh, as part of one of them, and that money is managed through the, uh, public, uh, facilities authority. And so, that's one part of the piece of the funding that we're going to be getting for our wastewater project, the other part is a loan that you authorized, um, for us to apply for, quite some time ago, probably, I believe it was earlier this year in January or February. So, this is really the appropriation that we got from the state, and it's simply that, um, you need to support the resolution for the application to the public facilities authority, or, or accepting this grant, making sure following all the rules related to the grant that we're doing.
Can I get a motion to approve resolution number twenty-twenty dash fifty-nine?
I'll make a motion to approve.
First and second, all payers say aye.
Aye.
Of course, motion is carried, resolution number twenty-twenty dash sixty, resolution approving plans, um, and specifications, and ordering advertisement for bids for twenty-twenty Mount Rose Water Wastewater, uh, improve, uh, improvements. Can I get a motion to approve that?
Aye.
Second, all payers say aye.
Aye.
Affirmative, motion is carried, we have to succeed COVID nineteen emergency, regardless plan.
Yep, so at the time that we actually sent out the agenda for this council meeting, there was a announcement made by the governor's office for a executive order, I believe the number was twenty dash ninety-seven, um, at six P M. last night, the governor actually put a different order in place, and that is Executive Order twenty dash ninety-nine. Basically, under this order, and we all know, based on what, um, Brian talked about in his presentation, the situation related to COVID is quite, quite, um, grim. And so, what they are talking about doing is limiting activities, the areas that are going to be most impacted by this are, they are going to be shutting down restaurants. Restaurants will take a pause effective as of Friday at midnight, and then through December eighteenth, I believe it is.
Restaurants?
Bar.
Restaurants are still open?
The restaurants are still open for takeout, yes, that is correct. So, restaurants are still open for takeout, however, they are not going to be allowed to have, um, people sit down at their, at their. So, the restaurants are one of the biggest ones that were impacted by the order. The other areas that were impacted were, uh, limiting some youth sports, they also talked about social gatherings that would be prohibited. Those gatherings, um, they're recommending that in, uh, both indoor and outdoor, that, uh, you cannot have more than ten people at a gathering. Now, the one thing I do want to point out is we as a government entity are exempt because of, um, our status as, as meetings. However, they are encouraging anytime that you have meetings, just like we're doing today, do you notice how we reconfigured everything? And to really make sure that we're following the rules for number sixteen, or that type of thing, and giving people the option that if they want to call in, that they certainly can call in, um, that is one of the things that has happened, wedding, wedding speakers, they can, um, still gather, however, they are saying that, um, you cannot have as many officials as you could. I believe it's fifty, I have this actually all highlighted, but I don't have to grab Justin and who else on my highlight, it's not, um, anyway, and so then, the other, uh, those are really kind of, um, the main topics as far as the new order goes. The biggest thing, and obviously the one that's going to hit harder since it was a target, is our best time. Any place that there's food, it's going to be very difficult to, um, you know, it's, it's going to be very difficult to.
Restaurants are falling, uh?
Yeah, all of them, and so, it's, the biggest part that we have is going to be for those businesses. Now, the other thing that we did is they did talk about, they did talk about, um, that there is going to be an additional ten million dollars available, and I don't know what that's going to, it's like a card for these businesses. The thing that I think is really important is they've talked about, this goes through two different cycles, and fact out. I should think, uh, it's on a, on a PowerPoint, but I think we have, we got, so if you want, I can show you that, but, you know, Brian did a really good job of kind of explaining the, um, the emergency situation at the year end, and the data reflects that it's the social gatherings and the bars and the restaurants and the fitness centers, which is the average area, and youth activities are the ones that are most impacted by this, and we're just seeing sort of whole generation of both companies. So, the appeal that is out there is what can we as a community do to, um, educate folks to do what we can for this, um, pandemic? I think the thought is if people really, over the next four weeks, if they, if we did, just like, you know, practical this, this in math, we did all the things that we're talking about, we're supposed to spend two cycles, and hopefully, then we can kind of get over that and start to see that third goal we have. That's really hopefully the point. Now, having said that, our businesses have taken a huge hit already, especially our restaurants, in our larger, we look at through North, um, they have a marketplace, which is the retail segment of what they have, but they just rebranded, it's beautiful, we haven't had a chance to go in there, so we did have to make the rest from there, you know, we look at Bull and Mill, we look at our quality, we look at, um, JD's, we look at any of our different stores, and they are all very much impacted. So, one of the things in this time period, um, that I think is really important is we really want to say that shops also as much as possible. I have a meeting with Sarah from the Chamber tomorrow, and one of the things that we are going to do is we're going to do a very aggressive marketing campaign so that people do that, just like we talked about with the road to Doug's, you know, um, we're going to do a very aggressive, um, campaign on our Facebook, on our website, on Twitter. However, we can get the message out there to have people shop these businesses, the restaurants are still open for takeout, and I think that's the takeaway here, that's very important. Um, and so, if we can still support those businesses, that's going to be the key that is, the other key, quite frankly, and Brian talked about it, and you guys know this, um, is just doing whole simple, you know, wearing the mask and watching cultural protests and all of that. So, that's kind of, um, what I have related to COVID, but I also have several questions that I would like, uh, to answer to give staff direction. When we first started, if we could place an emergency preparedness plan back in March when the government was there, since that time, obviously, the state government has had many of those, we were sending our plan once we opened, essentially, uh, citizen or backup on, so, the question that I would have is, is it necessary to implement, implement an emergency resolution and giving the mayor the power to make specific decisions on that? So, that's one of the questions that I would like direction from the council on tonight, so if you want, I can, uh, all my questions, we can, or we can just take them one at a time, we can discuss them, and then make a decision as to what you would do, so that's my first question that I would have for the council.
Well, can, correct me if I'm wrong, the mayor thinking when we had this for last four months, spring, was there any situation where you have to make some sort of decision on, uh, consulting, I just don't know.
Um, a lot of, uh, with the dealing with employees, uh.
The long, like, there was, uh, still long stuff, more of a, when it came to sort of the M S program that we had in place.
And the reason why I'm not aware of it, I think it was brought to our attention timing on the hour, I think, and I pretty much, everybody saw what, and pretty much, very, 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 very.
And that was one thing that I did say is, everybody needs to be informed, but the only reason why I'm throwing it is sometimes we had to make a decision and then you get a three days of waiting or something, that was, that was one of the problems, so we were trying to make sure we could get it down right.
Taking that into account, I didn't have any provisions for March, I wouldn't anticipate any major issues in, let's say, the next three months. But I also think that having the highest likely two officials be able to make snap judgment, if necessary, is, is fairly important.
Austin Fossey, do you have something?
Yeah, as long as, uh, any decisions that are made are, are communicated with the rest of the council and offices, we can react. It would be absolute fact that clients, but as long as we are informed of any decisions that are made.
I don't know much, this is on me, but I don't think I prepared the resolution, let me just know.
So then can we do it, if you don't go by resolution, are we able to go by motion? And then the company's, uh, I don't want to touch that. Yeah, Scott, are you still on?
Yeah, I am. You know, I'm, I'm assuming that we would want to pull out old resolution and rebrand it. Uh, there, another, with the council coming up, where the next short while with the budgets and different things. What are your, what special meeting where you could add this as another item?
So the only meeting that we have coming up is the one in December. So what we could do is if we just have to pass this resolution, I could just set up a go-to meeting and then just have everybody call in.
Scott, I'm, I'm, I'm a pro, I'm, I'd like to make a motion to you after the resolution, Law &amp; Mayor, essentially the same emergency powers that we have this spring, and that we address that resolution at every meeting, uh, until we feel it's necessary to, uh, once again, consider. Then he's written.
Well, see, the, the only thing is with the, if we, I mean, you can do it, you could actually probably adopt the resolution in December and just say it's retroactive. I mean, if you guys all agree by motion, that's what you're going to do, then it's still retroactive. I think, I mean, Scott, can we do it that way?
I, I, I really think that, you know, with the emergency powers that you're granting, you know, we, we need to spell them out, uh, at this point, if you want to give the direction, if something comes up, you know, you could wait till the December meeting, or you could do a special meeting, like, setting up an undergoes meeting with the council and, and get it passed that way. But I, I don't think you want to just have a blanket grant of authority. I think that's going to be too vague.
Yeah, I mean, it, I don't, I don't foresee probably too much.
Can that meeting, is that three weeks? Because it's a week.
Yeah, two, yeah.
But don't ask me when you call that first. Oh, okay, okay.
I thought.
And I would anticipate if there's any issues, it's going to be the next two, three weeks. So we definitely point to that.
You, you know, like, just thinking here, I don't know what, you know, I'm trying to think back to what decisions were made before. Did it primarily apply to like the parks, um, et cetera, something like that?
It was a little bit with the parks, Tony. It was, um, really what the mayor was able to do on behalf of the council was, when it came to our emergency revolving loan fund for the business.
But something to that effect, you know, I, it all versus the meeting. Uh, you know, what, what issues can come up, you know? Not saying we shouldn't do this, but back when Scott was directing it, framing this may, may, might need to be a more formal then, not just a, an obstacle. Hey, maybe we should do this again, or pass it and then write up a resolution afterwards. Does that make sense? I mean, we should pass this in a very formal manner.
And I.
Pass the, we agree on the resolution, we pass the resolution.
And I'm guessing the verdict for the resolution is already in place. I mean, I'm guessing the mayor wanted Scott to prepare for this spring.
We take a look at KIAB, I would think that it would largely mirror, uh, we might have helped some language in there, so it's maybe kind of dated or off the lead, depending on the references it's making to justify the grant of authority.
What, what part of the law states that? Other than the date.
We don't have the resolution in front of us.
Yeah, I mean, so I'm thinking is that there's a lot of recitals about this has happened and this has happened, and this is why we need to do the following items, and that's the part that I'm thinking is, could be updated to reflect. And not that it now versus what was happening last March.
If you get it, we, then, you know. Scott, how much most we have?
We're working, we're talking for a, uh, definitely.
The, the, the three days.
So for one thing, so we can, we can, we can, we can do it really, we can do like six, six thirty tomorrow, we can, but I'm just going to be able to, and we have to.
Ian, I'd like to close this.
Twenty-sixth, so, um, what's the, we have, well, five, you know, really, on Monday, you can do it with, uh, you can do it last day in the morning, or if you're, or if you're getting.
I'm guessing we gotta just, truth there, right?
Just let us know.
Okay.
We'll, 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 we'll. All right, next one, uh, do we want to change how business is conducted at City Hall?
So right now, um, and I kind of talked to some of my other colleagues, in Lake Park, they have actually closed six different areas, uh, where City Hall, um, it's not open to the public. The staff are still there working, but they, their doors are not open to the public. Um, in Avon, they, um, they have one window open. Fox Center have the, there's nobody, there's, the majority of their staff is upstairs, they only have one person downstairs, and that person is, you know, again, I like to flash, or whatever case they need. Plus, Fox Center has the drive-through, we don't have to. Um, and then Albany, I think it's like they come in five days. I, I would like to get a hold from the staff that is here. We had, Ed Tuff and I haven't had a chance to talk to that. I think the majority of the staff are going to tell you, they feel comfortable, it's working fine. Um, we do have this last petition here, but the one thing that I'm a little concerned about more perhaps than people coming to here and working with us is the library itself, because that's open to the public and that gives a lot more traffic. So I talked to Erin earlier today with the Great River Library, and I had asked her, you know, what is their intention, what, what is it that they would like to do? And she says that it varies by community. So it's really, what they typically will do is they will go by whatever the guidance to communicate. So that's one area that I do have a concern about. Um, I want to be able to provide the library access, that is a concern mine, is the amount of traffic that comes in to help the library. The other thing that I think is very critical is our senior center. Um, right now, the way that the ruling is, is it, in your gatherings of ten or less, um, and depending on how you read that, you know, it takes a little controversy because on one hand it's saying that if the folks are gathering, it can be your family, and then the other side it says you got to respect indoor and outdoors, not ten people. Um, and so I actually think, um. Let me just make sure I get it. Yeah, except that specifically permitted in this order, social gatherings are prohibited. Social gatherings, if you visit adults who are not members in the same household, congregated together for a common or coordinated social community or leisure purpose, even if social distancing can be maintained. This pro, uh, this pro, prohibition includes indoor and outdoor gatherings planned and spontaneous, except organizers of social gatherings may be subject to corporate or connection. So that actually is deterred than what they had in their previous executive order. So they're basically saying that they're forbidding now the gathering of, of any sort of social gathering. So I think, um.
I would guess to our, our, our seasoned citizens, uh, follow the bolstering the more vulnerable to the, to the virus. I don't know that any of them would be too careful with that, because it's a, it's a tool here for a month.
Yeah.
And, and so.
I, I'm strongly.
Let's hold off and see what's like the other question.
I'm strongly going to recommend that the council consider definitely closing down the senior center for sure. Um, now, the one thing that does need here is they, A, in sobriety, mental health supporters are not included in this. They're just saying remote meetings, remote meetings are encouraged whenever possible. Smaller meetings of shorter duration are encouraged. So, um, you know, we could limit that as well, but that is one group that does need here is they, A. The other groups that need here, I would say again, my recommendation is just to pause on that for at least a month. Um, we do have a big training that they have, they have asked to use our meeting room space for that, for continuing education for a, a business. So I will need to find out, um, when that is. And if it's during that timeframe before the eighteenth of December, I don't know if we can offer art space to them for that particular.
And, and double check because you know the central employees.
They are, that's the difference, yeah.
So that's the difference that they, they may be able to use.
Yep, um, but I would definitely say that our senior center should be paused for this month. And the other group, the other group that does need here is church. And they, again, in the order, talk about having those for remote groups. They're not saying that they can't gather, but they are very much encouraging remote services. That's another one that I guess I'm recommending, because that's probably the largest group that we have here. They usually have about thirty people present. And so, um, even if we were to spread everyone out, I'm not sure that can be the intent for, to use to happen here. So at this point, I would just be for guidance on those types of things. And then again, with the library, if we have any thoughts about that, um, or about what you want to do, if you want to limit hours at City Center, if you want to manage to make some of the videos. I think from a staff perspective, and, you know, you can ask, because that could work there. Craig's on the phone, and he can chime in on this too. I think we've done a very good job of putting up a management plan in place, and I think the staff, we follow that very closely. We have an all-staff meeting tomorrow, and again, everyone's going to be reminded about mask-wearing, about everything. But, I mean, that's a fair priority, you can ask that, but I feel like we do a really good job of cleaning and all those things. Our interaction with the public, with the exception of the few, with the exception of our reception, or anyone who's had a reception problem, it's pretty minimal. But then again, you know, there is a risk because of what we've done with social. I mean, are we putting our control over this for how you feel about it? I guess, I'm just looking for some guidance from, from.
Well, I, I would agree, the, the senior center, looking for. As for the meeting rooms, like I said, that's where we gotta try to find a way to, like I said, essential employees, who are looking at A, and, I mean, it is pretty essential.
Yeah.
This, where's the meeting room?
Every day. Every day, outside. I have two gentlemen that come in every day to look for a, there's a book group, there are, uh, there's a book club that needs donors on regular basis. There is a lady that needs donor, I think it's like cards perhaps. So it is very interesting.
Um, as, as for the library, is, is there a possibility of, you know, breaking a line, like a rope that goes to them, and then basically kind of off the, unless it's sexual that you use about, keep them waiting in the bathrooms?
I don't think we can do that because we're public, we're public, so if our building is open.
But at least, uh, keep, you know, put a library line, use that, and, um, maybe that might control that from coming up to you, uh, or to, or talking to them, where's the library, you know, because it sort of might help a little.
Well, I just, I'd be part of that, so we gotta, we gotta.
Yeah, we have that, we weigh around there.
We're in Dallas, we're in Dallas.
No, and I'm not saying, as, as, again, um, you know, we're going to have to advise our plan a little bit, but most part, we've been following our plan pretty strictly. And so I feel like we are doing what we're supposed to be doing. I just wanted to put it out there to the council to, um, see what, I just wanted it to be a discussion point to see if you had any comments or you wanted us to do anything.
Yeah, I guess the only thing that really, I think, came is maybe the senior center. I mean, we see it for, on, we get two guys on, like, or, or wear masks, uh, that really.
That's up to you guys, if the council.
It is, it's that early going against the workers, I mean, it's not a gathering that's ever before.
Yeah, but it is, now, if I read that correctly, it's an also.
Um, the council, I read through the, the most recent governor's order before the council meeting, and I, I, what I'm reading of it is, I, you know, social gatherings are banned for the next four weeks. I mean, I think you start from the position that, you know, indoor gatherings are not to, to happen unless there's an exception. And you can point to something, you know, like the AA with the therapy, it's an accept, you know, rule, but the default is, they don't get to use it. So people that, you know, it's just two people that come in for, and shoot some pool and leave, but then you got, you know, people that come in, you know, for the book club, and it sounds like they're getting out of there regularly. You're social. And I, and that's what the order is directed at, stopping for the next four weeks.
Well, maybe we're better off. Yeah, I believe the meeting rooms open for the central, uh, I can't remember if they're yet. A little bit about the, so if you want to. Uh, correct me. But I hope this, I hope this, I hope this, I hope this works. And the only guy that, about three, nineteen, twenty, December, is speaking. Senior center.
Have you had enough direction now?
I do believe I do. Uh, the other thing, again, and you know, as Brian talked about, and you guys being leaders, and I was on the call last week with them, and we'll be on the call tomorrow. It's really getting, it's educating the community about what we need to be doing as well. So, um, you know, we, by example, and I'll, I can have a conversation now with all staff, but if there's anything more we need to be doing, as I stated, I am going to meet with Fair tomorrow, we can do whatever we can to help our local businesses need. Um, we'll find out from speed if there's going to be funding available for them, additional funding. And, you know, we'll do what we can, we'll get, you know, shop local, we'll push that early cars, et cetera. So it is, um, that's, I think, what I would.
And, and I would agree with you on, you know, especially the next council meeting is the seventeenth. Um, so it is time for us to really tell the citizens, shop local. You know, the big corporations, they do not pay the taxes in town, they, um, are great, but we have to keep our businesses afloat. They're paying taxes with this community to help, uh, police, fire, ambulance. We need to go out of our way to help them out. So consider going to the Chamber and buying Rosie Bucks. You know, everybody needs gas, everybody needs food, everybody needs, you know, meat. Um, we all need services, and so many of the local businesses. Um, we all need services, and so many of the local businesses accept it. We really have to go out of our way to help it, because this is really going to be hard on our businesses the next four weeks. Have a really hard.
We believe you're strong, we can, uh.
They, they do take them there all, and so, so we have to do everything we can to help our businesses survive through this, because this is, um, you know, once in a, you know, century, where we're having something hit us again. So please shop local, you know, the day after Thanksgiving. Instead of going on Amazon, go for our local businesses and, and get from them. So that's my, we change. We are on action item sixty, resolution number twenty twenty dash sixty-one, uh, twenty twenty general fund transfer to the Melvivary Development Authority for business and assistance. Do you have to do a quick touch on that?
I would say that Jeff, last month, was the, the current fund that we, we have, we are able to help out for, uh, with that, uh, we also have nineteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars in seventy percent that NADA, so, um, we get out to, with that, the, 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 uh, the resolution number twenty twenty dash sixty-nine, transfer from the general fund, and I'd like to add, uh, to help.
Is there any questions, Tony, you have any questions or anything?
Yeah, I do. What, what were these funds, where are these funds coming from? It was, would it approve fire?
It, it's part of the CARES Act, so what it is, is with the CARES Act funding, there was, um, you know, when we originally set up the CARES Act program, it was, uh, the CARES money had to be used directly for PPD-related or, or coverage-refered expenses. What the CARES Act fund did not take into account is some other things, like, you know, lost revenue, that type of thing. Most of the businesses, you know, you could pay through your friends, you could pay for different things like that through the CARES Act, until we were able to, um, use those categories to fund a majority of the businesses that we funded, the twenty-three businesses. However, there were a couple that really saw, took a really big hit on lost revenue and a couple other things. And so what we could have tied back to is the CARES Act. So what we said is, we can use those CARES Act dollars for a different part of our, our, um, our general fund. And so we, we then, because most of the items in our general fund are already budgeted items, so like laser feet, let's take that as an example, is a budgeted item that we're already paying for. So then we have excess money in our general fund that is going to get transferred to NADA that helps these businesses. So the businesses that got this money are part of the twenty-three businesses, it's just a different category. So instead of it being for CARES Act related, it's for things that are not direct, we would not be able to, uh, have the receipt to show, um, the CARES Act stuff. So then we just are funding them differently, basically.
So this money is, is not money that is coming from the CARES Act, this is just coming directly from the general fund?
It is, that is correct, however.
It's replaced by the CARES.
It's replaced by the CARES, correct. So there's things that are CARES Act is funding in our general fund.
So it's a watch, it's a watch.
Is this, this is the money that we spent and we submitted for expenses on our part?
No, we made ourselves whole right away, Tony, and then this is done.
Yeah, just for to make sure that, you know, somebody didn't get in over there, has allocated general fund money when there really wasn't any authority to allocate general fund money.
And, and I'm saying it, I, I might say it a little awkwardly, but it, it, no. We are making it a watch, like, bumper side of a watch.
All right, so, um, can I get a motion to approve this, uh, resolution number twenty twenty dash sixty-one?
I think it's approved.
Thank you, second. Okay, person in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose, motion's carried.
Name.
Name. All right.
It's just a company. What's the name?
That's okay. Um, old business, there's nothing there, uh, new business, there's nothing there. And the only informational item was, uh, the utilities commission, uh, October twelfth, for a meeting minutes. Um, everything is done, again, by, uh, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and thank you to your community and shop local, and can I get a motion to adjourn? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried.
Thank you.